Hello, hello. Hello, this is Charles Van Morgan. I'm live again on the Gay Street Bridge. Yeah, look at the traffic. So, uh... Lot of traffic on the Gay Street Bridge. Excuse me. The Henley Street Bridge. There's a, used to be a lot of traffic on the Gay Street Bridge, but now you can't go across that bridge. So evidently, this is a point of contention. So we will hammer away. Because they know that it makes people mad. If I knock on doors, I've talked to them. They want the bridge open. And this administration is not gonna open it for cars. So they wanna, they don't want me over here. And if I get over here and say something on the Henley Street Bridge, they're gonna try to, try to say that I'm using dangerous rhetoric. Yeah, right. Look at this. Traffic backed up. A long way. And this is on a Saturday afternoon. This ain't even a day of the week. This is a road that people come through Knoxville. And when it's not backed up, they pull into our restaurants, they pull into our stores, and contribute to the Knoxville economy. But, you know, as well as I do, when a road's backed up, even on a Saturday, they're gonna take the interstate and bypass Knoxville. Because they don't wanna get stuck in that, in that traffic in Knoxville. You know, the people on the interstate, sure, they, you know, they closed down that bridge on Chapman Highway. Let's go to the interstate. They get right through Knoxville and contribute to the economy in Jefferson City and Sevierville. But they're not contributing to the economy. They just get right on the interstate because the word is out. You know, that bridge that was closed down, that was open for over a hundred years. They've closed it down. There's a bad bike up on Chapman Highway. Tourists, let's say, let's go to the interstate and let's, let's get out of that bad traffic that, that is in Knoxville. You know, till they get the bridge open up, and then we might wanna go down through there. But that Chapman Highway's bad with all that traffic that blocked up in Knoxville. So that's what they do. And they don't improve the economy and prices go up and, and excuses keep coming in. And if you say anything about it, you're dangerous. Because that's what they said about me. I'm dangerous because I want a bridge open up. That's been, that was open for 120 years. Now, I'm just telling you, you know, what lies these people try to tell. So I'm out here, gonna keep going this time, get across the bridge. And, uh, we're gonna go to, uh, to, uh, pass out some flyers in another area. Well, it looks like we need to get across. In another area of Knoxville. Let's see if we can get up out, past the bridge. I got a bunch of stuff on. So, uh, we got a water bottle and a bunch of stuff. So let me take a little second here to get rearranged. But, but, uh, we're gonna knock on some doors, let me see if I got any guests on board. Okay, I got a few, so hold on just a second. And, uh, rearrange stuff here. So, got a few things I wanna talk about today. Voting is coming up, August 26th, just a couple of days away. So if y'all vote in the election, I'm running for city council.
Thank you.
You wanna leaflet?
We are the resident of this city.
Do what now?
We are not the resident of this city.
Oh, you're not, okay. Well, God, God bless you too. Anyway, so yeah, I'm for all people.
Yeah, very much so.
Thank you. They said they're not a resident of the city. But I like visitors here. And, uh, it's because the University of Tennessee and visitors here, visitors to the Great Smoky Mountains National Park. This is a main thoroughfare through that. And when it's backed up with Gay Street being closed, because that's where residents go. Residents have to use this road now, or they can also use the James Watt Parkway. But that road is, a lot of times backed up because of the bicycle trail they've made. It used to be four lane road on Moody. And I woke up one morning and it's, it's a one lane going each direction and a bicycle trail with no bicycles there. So, uh, you know, and this is, this needs to be open. Free flowing traffic. We might even need to add another lane. And you know, if they wiped that bicycle lane out, there could be three lanes in one direction across that bridge. Either getting in or heading toward the interstate. Would be practical and would help the economy. I would think possibly opening up three lanes coming into Knoxville. Because if you wanna come into Knoxville, South Knoxville, we need three lanes. You're welcome. Come on. Patronize our businesses and, uh, our restaurants and our waiters and waitresses, and boost the economy here. But it dramatically, and you know, maybe they need to do a study. But they don't do a study on stuff that goes against them. They study stuff that's in their favor. And then when it ain't, if they've accidentally done a study, then they, they manipulate the numbers. But I'd like to see a study done. Let's see. And I don't have to do a study. I can tell you right off the top of my head, if you open this bridge up, three lanes going, coming into Knoxville will boost the economy. Prices will go down. You know, Kroger's right up here. People go to Kroger's. When you got more people buying stuff, prices, the food goes down, supply and demand. You know, when there's a, um, a big, when there's a big supply, they go up on prices. And so let's, uh, let's, uh, increase traffic flow through to the Great Smoky Mountains National Park and open up the Gay Street Bridge. Have I said enough about that? No, I don't think so. I'm gonna, since that's the point of their contention, since it makes them mad, I'm gonna keep punching that area because it hurts them bad. You know, they, they don't, they, they wanna call it dangerous. So, you know, you keep, you keep hitting on where it hurts. So, uh, it hurts because they know people want that bridge open. And it's gonna be open for them, but not you. So let's talk about the election coming up, last day you got to vote. The reason why I'm on here today and maybe the next two days, making a lot of videos, is because of the fact that there's an election coming up, two days, August 26th. You got Sunday and Monday. And the election is Tuesday. So yeah, let's go, let's go vote. On, uh, Tuesday, November, August, excuse me, August the 26th, not November, August the 26th, 2025, go vote in the Knoxville City Council race in South Knoxville. And, uh, you can make your own decision about the other candidates. And there may be one or two. I can name a few I wouldn't vote for. I mean, I can tell you, I've met them in person. They won't even speak. So you know, when you, when they get on the city council, if they won't speak to you now, what do you think they're gonna do? When they get elected, a lot of them fooled a lot of people. One of them I voted for that ran for mayor that, uh, I wouldn't vote for now. You know who I'm talking about? He wouldn't even speak. I mean, he's, he's a, he's a big dog. He's a big dude. He's too good for us other people. Rich man, doesn't even live here in the city of Knoxville. So yeah, so how you doing? I'm running for city council if you wanna leaflet. I'm, I'm, if you vote in this area. So, uh, I'd like to make the buses more accessible and we'll treat them bus drivers better, pay them more. Oops, I'm recording this, ain't recording you. That ain't so common, you know? They treat us, people that ain't billionaires like we're dirt. And the rich people get in office. So, uh, and I'm promising to fight for y'all. They got a lot of money that they're putting into these campaigns. You can tell by the reason there's signs. And they're getting money from people buying influence that don't even live in this area. They don't ride these buses and they don't care nothing about them. They're, they're wanting to buy land so they can move in big corporations and pay people minimum wage, you know, after they run the local businesses out. So, so I'm the, yeah, you're welcome. I'm the best qualified on the ballot. And they're worried about me because this election's only South Knoxville. The whole city doesn't vote. So you get to pick, just you get to pick who, who you want to represent you. So you don't have, you don't have to have as much money to knock on all these doors. And I've knocked on about 6,000 doors. So they're a little, they're a little afraid of me, you know? They, they claim I'm a convicted felon. And, and, uh, I'm a meth dealer from Georgia. And I, yeah, and, uh, I, I can't even get on the ballot if you're a meth dealer, you know? So they're telling some whoppers.
Oh, wow. Yeah, they will. They'll do anything just trying to get a vote.
Yeah, and I won't. I tell people the truth. You know, that bridge over there, if that was open, the traffic would flow a little better, wouldn't it? I, I did a story on that bridge saying we need to open up the Gay Street Bridge. All they got on there and said, I said, roads are for cars. They said that I'm using dangerous rhetoric because I said roads are for cars. You believe that? That's funny, isn't it? That's not dangerous. Yeah, but I'm just saying, so Tuesday, you got two days, vote for me, if you will. God bless y'all, pray. And, uh, it won't be the last time you see me because I'll come and I'll say, what can we do better to serve you? Imagine that to the government that's supposed to serve the people. Instead of their, excuse me, damn self is what they do.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, people know that. And that's why they don't like me because I ain't gonna serve them. I'm gonna serve you all. God bless you. I'm gonna leave you alone. Be safe. So yeah, that's a voter here in South Knoxville. I just tell people the truth. It ain't pretty. The truth ain't pretty, but it protects us. I mean, if you keep voting for these people that are lying to you, we're gonna have the biggest bicycle trail all over the city where roads used to be. And I mean, people say that's a conspiracy. No, it's not. No, it's not. It's the truth. It's that green energy stuff. And I'm all behind green energy. But you can't start people out getting there. And they don't care about that. They got plenty of money. And they don't want roads for cars. They want us walking on bicycles. Look what they did to Cumberland Avenue. It's one lane down through there. Sold out to corporations to build high-priced housing and take a lane of traffic. That road was four lanes down through there for years and years and years. A main thoroughfare to get to the interstate. And they've made it two lanes down through. That's what they've got through. Because of people in your city council that are for the government. By the government, for the government, running on the government's dime. So I'm just saying, one of the candidates that is running for South Knoxville works for the government right now, works for the government. So, I mean, we need the government running the government. I mean, that'll work out just fantastic. Where's the people at? Oh, there's a little step in there between. It's the government running the government and then, and then the people. So there's, there's two steps to get to the city council. And the lady running against me is gonna block you from getting there. She's got an agenda and she's going with it. She don't care what you say. Because let me tell you, the woman is a Democrat. I have nothing against Democrats. God bless every one of you. I see things the way you do in some areas. I really do. Some areas I don't. Some I don't because I have to answer to God. And I'm, I wouldn't, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't believe in some of the things that you all believe in. And some, there's some, there's some, uh, Democrats that believe exactly the way I do. So I'm not running Democrats. I'm talking about the leadership in the party. But a Democrat went to a Republican forum and pretty much invited herself and the Democrats, and the Republicans let him be at the forum. And, and, uh, the, the lady spoke what she could, was allowed to say because she works for the government. So she can't say everything. She has to obey the government. Because people that work for the government do not have freedom of speech rights. You don't. That's case law. I've got a doctor of jurisprudence. I know that. There's a few things you know when, when you go to law school, a few things you learn that's not common knowledge. And I'm not saying people are dumb. But if you study an area, you know more about that area than I do. And I know more about the law. I've got a doctorate level education in it, passed the bar exam than most people. And I'm not under the control of these dirtbags. The Board of Law Examiners is one of the most crooked organizations in the United States. Takes money from, uh, other states for tax money, makes millions and millions, and then, and then denies law license if you don't obey the government. And I'm not obeying the, the government when they're wrong. I've got rights. I'm not obeying the government when they disobey constitutional rights. The Board of Law Examiners is involved in conspiracy to prevent free trade. And they do. Only if you do what they say and uphold the government and talk about the legitimacy of the government. Even when they fail you and they're dangerous, you gotta withhold, uphold them. And I'm not gonna do that. That's not true. I'm for the people. I've always been for the people. But this lady that's running against me, and I'm not gonna say her name, you know, you can get an indicator of what they're gonna do by the color of their signs. So let's see what that's about. Okay, yeah, I got a few supporters on here, followers. You can tell what a candidate's gonna do by the color of their sign. Now, they are, they're green. And I, I believe in green. I love green, but that's not the main focus. The main focus is, uh, safety and protection of the public. And one of the ways we can get safety and protection is improve the economy. So, uh, you know, I'm not, I'm not in favor of slowing down the economy to, uh, to shut down roads. Because that doesn't go together anyway. Because you can't even turn right on roads and your car's sitting idling when they close down a lane for bicycles. And that's more. But she can't speak up for you. She's part of the government. Got her green signs out. Now, they have a, that's what I wanna talk about. They have a proxy, a voting proxy. This is why I need you to go to the polls on August the 26th, two days from now. They have a voting proxy. And a voting proxy is people get together, groups for their own purposes, and the government gets together. The government gets together, a bunch of voters, a lot of them voters. And you know, she's part of the government, but she's not the worst one, I don't think. They get together and get a voting proxy, a bunch of voters that agree for benefits and, and different things. You get this this time, I get this, that, the next time. And they automatically go to the polls and they pick a candidate that they're gonna support, that's gonna support them. But that leaves the mass amount of South Knoxvilleians out of the mix. And they do what they're gonna do and force their will on more people out here than are voters, and even more voters. So, and it's gonna get worse. It's a voting proxy. And they have an automatic number of voters. People say, well, how do they win? They got an automatic number of voters that are on their side because of benefits that they get. Because, that, that go against you, that you have to pay for. You have to pay for taxes that benefit these people, that get extra special privileges. So we're going to have to have a high number of voters to come out and overturn their already established people that are trying to, trying to rig the election and have a pre-established number of voters. So, uh, so we need you to vote. And the election commission's calling it pathetic, the turnout. Because so far, I think there's little over 800 votes in South Knoxville deciding to represent you on the city council. And the reason the election commission's calling it pathetic is maybe they haven't gotten enough of their voter proxy to come out. And because it's not gonna be a blowout. Because it can only, you know, if it's, if I get one vote, it's 700. Not that bad of a win for them. They want it to be very compelling. And they know I'll get more than one vote. But I voted for myself. I believe in myself. And I know other people that have. So they want a high turnout of their proxy. I don't think, in my opinion, they don't want a high turnout of Knoxvilleians. Because I don't think the majority of Knoxvilleians want us to continue to be one big bicycle trail. Roads continue to be closed down. The road's not fixed. The homeless problem could continue. I don't think Knoxvilleians are behind that. Knoxvilleians want, uh, to have a choice in what moves in their neighborhood. They don't want people to move in the neighborhoods that are drug rehabs, where they're still selling drugs and men run around in their, 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 without a shirt on in front of their little kids. And they didn't know anything about it. They just pop up one day. And, and also apartment complexes popping up in residential areas. And I know I had a voter and another candidate, I had a voter that said that the candidate didn't even, the other candidate didn't even ask to put a yard sign up. And one just popped up in their yard and they said, can you put one of yours in our yard? So I did. They took that one down, threw it, threw it away. And I didn't ask them to. They, they hollered at me going down the street. And I talked to the lady and she's trying to make a deal with me. She said that she's in real estate and works for companies that are involved in building apartment buildings for corporations. And she wanted my help. And you know, she had put my sign out there and, and I, and I told her that. You know, I'm all for housing. I want local builders as far as we can. And, and, uh, I want the residents in an area to be able to decide if they want an apartment building right next door to their house. I want them to be put in areas where they have permission. And she said, well, I don't know. I'm, I'm not sure with them. I'm gonna vote for you or not. And you know, if you don't wanna vote for me because I'm for the people and not gonna fill your pocket in your corporation, then I don't, I don't care. I'd say, you know, I won't win deceitfully. And all of a sudden, my sign's down the next day and that other candidate signs back up. So she's made a deal. So go ahead, you know? And whoever gets in office. I'm just telling you, how many deals have they made? I don't know. Yeah, and they, they make deals like that. I don't. I'm not gonna lie to people and tell you, yeah, I'll do whatever you want me to do, you know? And when I get in office, I'll, 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 I'll vote in favor of the corporations moving in here. Give me your vote. I don't do that. I'm not doing that. That's not right. It's wrong. It's deceitful and it's corrupt. So listen to these politicians. Look at their history. What are they doing? You know, are they selling insurance that makes attorneys filthy rich? That'd be a little indicative. They have these sales deals that can talk you into buying this high dollar insurance. And you know, some of the richest people are politicians and attorneys because you can see, you can tell by who advertises the most. You see a attorney's advertisement and used car salesman on almost every sign. They got a lot of money because of insurance. They got a sure pocket of money and it's mandatory, you gotta buy insurance. So you know, do you wanna, do you want a insurance salesman? A man, she'll make mega bucks after she gets in office if she does that. And so that's the other candidate. Uh, and she's bragging about how much money she's made and how much money she's spent on the campaign. Other people's money. I mean, I wouldn't brag about spending other people's money. I, I haven't spent much money on this campaign. I've worked and did it myself. So that's, that's some of the other candidates. Another candidate is a friend of the mayor. Now, they got their voting proxy. They got their voting proxy. Let's see if there's a sign that says I can't knock on doors. And they got their voting proxy because it's the government's proxy. And they've got their registered voters that they point to and say, yeah, this, vote for this person. This is, this is who we're voting for this year. Because they know they're doing favors for them or whatever. You know, it's a little wink. That's what we're doing. It's this who we're voting for. And they've got already hundreds of voters already established in the proxy. And that's why it's hard for an honest person that's gonna go in office and listen to you and do what you say. Not lie to you. I just told you, I wouldn't lie to you. I'm not telling you if you work for a corporation, I'm not gonna help you overcome the objections of residents that live here in Knoxville. I'm not gonna do it. You're, you know, you, you take your vote and put it somewhere else. You're, I'm not bought. I'm not gonna be bought. You know, go jump in the river, swallow a snake, come out with a bellyache. And that's putting it in ice. I'm not, you're not buying my vote. I'm not for sale. I'm for Knoxvilleians. Because this is your government and you're supposed to be able to run it. And you don't right now. Corporations and sold-out politicians run it. And they lie, lie, lie. They tell you whatever you wanna hear to get your vote. And then they go do what those corporations and those people tell you to do, tell them to do. One of them does what the government tells them, her to do. She's, she's part of the government now and she'll be part of the government. The government run the government. You know, it's a fox guarding the hen house. Although it's much worse than that, I think. And, and the other one is insurance salesman and a friend of the mayor that has their proxy set up. So we're gonna have to overcome that. We're gonna have to overcome hundreds of votes. We're not gonna win. Just quite frankly, because they've got it rigged already. And, and, uh, by their favors, their backroom deals, their winks. They don't tell you right up front. They don't tell each other right up front. They don't have to say, you know, we, we're voting for this person because they're doing specifically this. They just know when they get in office and they have votes that they want in a certain way, then that's part of their, their proxy's desires, then oh, get that vote. And even, that's why people come to these city councils mad as hell. They don't understand. I mean, it doesn't help the city, doesn't help anybody that they know of, but it helps their proxies. And even I'd say nothing. I mean, there's nothing illegal done. It's just a little wink, you know, a little backroom deal in the hallway. I know how it's done. I've seen it done. I didn't like it. But back when I was a trooper, you know, I had to keep my job. So, uh, let me turn the light. So I didn't, uh, I couldn't, had to take care of a family. So, but now, you know, they don't control me. They don't make my paycheck. And I didn't do anything illegal. But you know, you have to obey your boss. Now they, they, I don't work for them, so I can do whatever you all tell me to do. And I certainly will. But, so we need people to come out to beat the proxy. Two days from now, a matter of hours, a little over 48 hours, you can go, head to the polls in your area. It's the voting day primary. Let's get enough votes to put us over the top so that we can, we can at least be second. And let me put it to you this way. We don't have to beat the top candidate. All we have to do is, uh, if the bear's chasing us, is outrun two of the other candidates. And outrun one of them. And, uh, we, we will, I outrun both of them. And, uh, we will get into the general election and we will, then we'll worry about the general election when that comes up. So, so, uh, God bless y'all. Hello? I'm running for the city council if I can give you a leaflet about my campaign. Okay, well, there you go. This ain't much fun sometime. But, um, so, uh, so, uh, show up to the polls, vote, and we'll see, we'll see, uh, what happens on the 26th. We're probably gonna try to have a watch party. And, uh, I don't know where it's gonna be at. I thought about maybe meeting at the south end of the Gay Street Bridge that's closed down. Because if I don't get in office, I don't think it's ever gonna be open. And I'll certainly, certainly fight for it being open if you, uh, if you will vote for me, Charles Van Morgan. So, uh, you see a lot of people, you know, no thank you. So if you want me to win, then, uh, don't sit this one out. Go to the polls. And, uh, so we're gonna knock on some doors here in this, in this, uh, neighborhood, in this apartment complex. It's in South Knoxville. Try to get some vote on the ass. This is the lady here. I gotta get one yes before I turn the YouTube off. So I'm running, I'm running for city council to represent you in this area. Can I give you a leaflet about the campaign?
I'm sure.
Yeah, all right. There you go. Let me, let me set this down here.
Okay.
I'm promising to represent you all as opposed to these billionaires that buy these campaigns. So.
Oh, okay. Awesome.
And little children are the most important. They overlook them because they don't vote. But there you go.
All right.
Election's about 48 hours away.
All right.
So, uh, you know, they got it rigged, so we're gonna have to get enough votes to beat the rig. Thank you. God bless you. I had one lady say no thank you. So I had to get one person to say, before I turn off, I'm YouTube live. So, well, I'm not filming unless you let me. I will. Okay, there you go. There you go. There's a nice family. There you go. Thank you. God bless you. See, I got some supporters. God bless you. Yeah, there we go. So we'll leave with that. And remember, And remember, for God so loved the world that he gave his only God, son, that whosoever believes in him should not perish and, but have everlasting life. That applies if I win or lose, that'll get you all the way to heaven. And remember, God loves you and I do too. Until next time, we'll see you later. Bye bye.